All right, good morning. Thank you for joining us this morning. This is the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners Finance Committee. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna begin this morning with a public comment, if there's anyone from the public wishing to comment. Good morning.
I'm Dee Jones, genuine human being, very authentic. I think I'm really one of the geniuses people on earth, only living on the universe. I'm in the game right now. I'm probably gonna get kicked off because I got three minutes to speak to Kent County Board. I plugged my PS five up here and found got a video capture so I can actually play the game. So I'll be here if it's boring and stuff like that. I'll be on my PS five. Also in the United Nations uniform for the feedback session, as you guys know, I was here at the United Nations Feedback. Well, I'm giving the feedback. I was saying that we need to do some esports and gaming activities at the United Nations because it'd be thousands of people. There's nothing to do. And I think it'd be a cool thing to bond with different people from different cultures and different nations and stuff. And then yesterday I was at the Saudi Export Development Authority and I connected some people from Saudi to some of our local companies here that billion dollar companies, billionaires, some of the vendor food vendors, because they look to come from Saudi, Dubai, the UAE, here to the United Nations. So I wanted to be sure I put these nice cars up there because I've already connected those nice business people, very, very rich, nice people that look to expand here. And I look to expand there too and do some cool business stuff because the Esports Olympics, as I am the pioneer, the legend Dee Jones. I have also, the Esports Olympics is twenty twenty sevens around there. So it'd be cool how karma works. See what I do and grind, how hard I grind to be able to try to get some, some noise so Kent County can have some representation. Or be having Dee Jones just there at the Esports Olympics in twenty twenty seven, as that's one of my big goals. Because I spoke to the Special Olympics because there are kids with disabilities and health issues, but esports levels to play in field for those people. So yeah, hopefully, you know, I increase the fiscals for Kent County, the GDP, you know what I'm saying, around here. Being able to do some good ethical business. Hopefully you guys hear what I'm saying. So you guys can legislate and work with people in Saudi and the Kingdom and people in the UAE and Dubai. And hopefully we can do this ethically because I'm not going to stop doing what I'm doing for the community globally, for the United Nations. As you guys, I want you all to get a little, you know, from the United Nations feedback session and stuff like that because I'm going to be a global business leader. I'm going to be very, 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 very rich one day. And I'm going to do this ethically. And I'm going to do it just and I'm going to give back. And my friend Ben Green there, you're a cool dude, Ben Green. I like you. So I had to say your name, public comment, because I don't even have to say that. And I know the cool things that I do for society. I don't even need to say anyone's name, but I like Ben Green. But I got this blue controller though. And I want to thank the West Michigan Sports Commission because they bought me this PS five that was on the article for the thirty two billion dollar company. I had educate the students around Kent County. It was pretty cool. So thanks, West Michigan Sports Commission for giving back so I can give back.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three on our agenda, the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda? Moved by Commissioner McLeod, seconded by Commissioner Oliver King. Is there any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion passes. Takes us to item four, four A, agenda items. The first from the Administrator's Office, Summer twenty twenty five General Operating Property Tax Levy.
Yep.
Good morning. Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to authorize a Summer twenty twenty five General Operating Tax Levy. Summary pursuant to state law, a notice of public hearing concerning the twenty twenty five county budget was published in a newspaper of general circulation on July twenty eight, twenty twenty four, and a public hearing concerning the budget was held on August eighth, twenty twenty four. The Kent County Board of Commissioners adopted a fiscal year twenty twenty five appropriation on August twenty two, twenty twenty four. The twenty twenty five adopted budget requires the levy of four point oh six oh five mils to be authorized for the twenty twenty five summer tax billing, which has a tax levy date of July one, twenty twenty five. Funds derived from the levy of this millage will be utilized to support general operating purposes included in the county's twenty twenty five adopted budget.
Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Commissioner, supported by Commissioner Halsted. Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none on this item. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. The motion passes. We are on to item B, the Community Action Walk for Warmth Special Project Fund Appropriation.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to accept and appropriate nine thousand three hundred and sixty four dollars and thirty two cents in donations to the FY twenty twenty five KCAA Walk for Warmth Special Project Fund Budget. Summary, the Board of Commissioners previously appropriated ten thousand four hundred and thirty six dollars to the FY twenty twenty five Walk for Warmth Special Project Fund Budget. Additional donations in the amount of nine thousand three hundred and sixty four dollars and thirty two cents were raised during the twenty twenty five fiscal year. The Walk for Warmth Funds will help families and individuals in Kent County avoid utility shut offs and restore gas and electric services. Assistance is available to households with incomes at or below two hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty level as determined by KCAA with the additional funds. KCAA anticipates assisting approximately thirty five households providing an average payment of three hundred dollars per household.
Do I have a motion for this item? Moved by Commissioner McLeod, seconded by Commissioner Oliver King. Any questions or comments on this item? Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. I just wondered how, if there's other fun, I'm assuming there's other funds appropriated in the KCCA budget for this purpose. And so I just, so if a family gets assistance for shut offs, is this just on top of what they would be allocated? For those services, because I know there's other funds, right? So would this be like additional monies that they would get to keep from getting shut offs? I'm just trying to understand how this supplements or is it in addition to?
We have staff here, so I'll let them take the first crack. Yes.
Good morning. These would be additional. What we normally use the funds for, I'm sure you're a Glosb program manager over specialized services, emergency services. But we normally use the funds for households who don't qualify for our mainstream funding or who need additional. So if our mainstream funding will assist up to, let's say, a thousand dollars and they need thirty five hundred, then we could use this to supplement that.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Did you? Okay. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay. The motion passes. We are on to item C, the drain from the Drain Commissioner's Office, the Emmons Lake Drain Drainage District Bond.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to transfer and appropriate three hundred and forty three thousand dollars to the FY twenty twenty five General Fund Drains County at Large Budget from the General Fund Transfers Out Budget for the Emmons Lake Drainage District two hundred and forty, four, two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars and the Cascadia Drain, one hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars. Summary, each year properties within the county drainage districts are specially assessed for work performed on county drains. The assessments are based on the size and impervious area of each parcel. When there are county roads within the district, the county receives an assessment for them. It is difficult to predict the projects that will be encountered on the county drains and which drains will receive petitions for work from the public or municipalities. The FY twenty twenty five General Fund Budget Appropriation includes ninety one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars for the county share of at large drain assessments. It is estimated the actual at large drain assessments for FY twenty twenty five will be four hundred and thirty four thousand dollars, four hundred and twenty, with the addition of Kent County at large amounts for Emmons Lake Drainage District, two hundred and fourteen thousand, and the Cascadia Drain, one hundred and twenty nine thousand. An additional appropriation of up to three hundred and forty three thousand is required to pay the FY twenty twenty five at large drain assessments.
So it seems like we just read the, the action item for, for item D. So we're gonna move, we're gonna switch those items. So this is now the Drain Commissioner, from the Drain Commissioner's Office, the Emmons Lake and Cascadia Drain at Large Appropriation. So we're gonna take up this item first. Is there a motion for that item? Moved by Commissioner Stack, supported by Commissioner Halsted. Commissioner Oliver King question? Oh, okay. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Stack.
So what if we say no to the bond then? Is that, I'm just kidding. The, the thing that, that strikes me is it is, it's like four times the budgeted amount. And I get it that budgeting is a guess a little bit, but this seems like it's really quite far the mark. How, how do we get these numbers set in the budget? You're all alone, Jeff.
Yeah, good morning. I don't know where Ken is today, but I'll try to cover for him here. Obviously, Ken submits his own budgets and we go through it. And I think he takes his best estimate when the budget's put together. It's obviously a year ago. He doesn't, he's not sure what petitions and stuff come through at the time and how long they're gonna take to get through the process. Sometimes they go quicker, sometimes they take a really long time. So these move through the process quicker, I think, than he thought for his budget. And so we need this amendment.
Okay, well, I, I would have thought that they see this coming a year or two in advance, but it pops up. All right. Thank you.
We'll try to cover it in this next year's budget, give him a little more leeway, so.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. The motion passes. So now we will go on to item C, the, from the Drain Commissioner's Office, the Emmons Lake Drain Drainage District Bond.
Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to authorize the issuance of Emmons Lake Drain Drainage District Bond Series twenty twenty five. Summary, the Emmons Lake Drain Drainage District, a Kent County Drainage District under the jurisdiction of the Drain Commissioner, is authorized under Act forty Public Acts of Michigan nineteen fifty six, as amended for the making of specific intercounty drain improvements, and will issue its bonds in order to finance the improvements. The proposed resolution will authorize the pledge of the county's limited tax full faith and credit as backup security on the bonds. The county treasurer to execute a certificate of the county to comply with the continuing disclosure. The county administrator and the chairperson of the Board of Commissioners to prepare and approve portions of the official statement that pertain to the county and the execution of all other documents as necessary in order to close on the issuance of the proposed bonds. The bond proceeds will be used to pay for necessary improvements by the Emmons Lake Drain Drainage District and a special assessment district established by the Drainage District in an amount not to exceed four point five million dollars. The principle of an interest on the bonds will be payable from assessments to be made upon public corporations and or benefited properties in the special assessment district. The Kent County at large amount totals two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, which will be paid in fiscal year twenty twenty five, necessitating an increase in appropriations in a subsequent resolution. The pledge of full faith and credit will allow the property owners and public corporations to pay their assessments over time and provide a better interest rate in doing so, thus providing a substantial benefit to the residents of the county. The method of sale will be determined based on the best current market offerings at the time of sale. Staff anticipates closing on the bonds in June twenty twenty five. I just wanted to note that Roger Swetz, who is the bond counsel, is in the audience in the event there's questions, so.
Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Commissioner Oliver King. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Green. Questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. I would hate to have Attorney Swetz here without having a question to him. He's gonna pay me back for that. So can you just, good morning, can you just talk briefly about the, the payback process and the special assessment? I mean, once the bond is issued, how the, how the bond is paid off?
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. So the, the way a drainage bond works under the Michigan Drain Code is that the entire cost of the project is specially assessed to benefited properties and public corporations. And so the, the assessment against the, the county was mentioned. There's also assessments against Caledonia Township, Gaines Township, Village of Caledonia and, and the MDOT, the State Department of Transportation. A lot of those municipals' assessments will actually be prepaid. So we've asked you for full faith and credit on four point five million. Since we, we want to make sure that we have those monies in hand before we lower the dollar amount. But in the end, we will only issue bonds for the amount of outstanding assessments. Those assessments then that are not, that are not prepaid would be payable over time, over the length of the bonds. And so they're, they're billed in equal annual payments of principal. So the principal will be divided over the number of years of the bond. And that will be billed each December first on the tax bill with interest billed also then at the bond rate or up to one percent over the bond rate to provide a little bit of cushion. So those are then collected according to, you know, following the same process for collection of, of taxes and delinquent taxes if any go delinquent. So that provides a, a, a pretty secure method of payment for the bonds.
Does the Drain Commissioner collect the assessment if it's delinquent?
No, the, the drain assessments are collected on the tax bill. And so any delinquents would go through the, the normal county delinquent tax collection process.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Thank you. All right, seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. The motion passes. It takes us to item E from the Administrator's Office, Funding Support for West Michigan Sports Commission Winning Street Campaign.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to transfer and appropriate three hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars to the FY twenty twenty five Meyer Sports Complex Expansion Special Projects Fund Budget from the FY twenty twenty five Undesignated Special Fund Projects Fund Budget to support the West Michigan Sports Commission's Winning Street Campaign. Summary, the West Michigan Sports Commission broke ground in late twenty twenty four on the Meyer Sports Complex, which improves existing fields, adds a new championship softball field, adds three new flexible use diamond fields for youth and amateur baseball and softball, twenty pickleball courts, and new amenities for visiting families and athletes. These improvements will allow the Sports Commission to attract two hundred more teams annually, leading to one million dollars annually in new local spending. Kent County's allocation was used to install synthetic turf on the complex's existing championship baseball field. The West Michigan Sports Commission experienced cost overruns amounting to three hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars for the championship baseball field synthetic turf project, primarily due to inflation that followed the COVID nineteen pandemic. By allocating an additional three hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars to the West Michigan Sports Commission, the organization will be one step closer to closing out the Winning Street Campaign and focus solely on completing the expansion of the Meyer Sports Complex.
Thank you, Al. So this is an item that we already had a motion for by Commissioner Halsted, and it was seconded by Commissioner Green. So we do not need a new motion for that. So we will just go straight to any questions or comments on this item. Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. So I've got a couple of questions. I guess the first one is, what was the initial plan for potential cost overruns for this project? Because I can imagine that it was probably part of the process, understanding the impact that the pandemic had on, on projects of all sorts. And then a follow up question would be, this, the West Michigan Sports Commission contract is primarily funded by Experience GR. I understand it. And I wonder why, I wonder if there was conversation with Experience GR to adjust the contract to allow for these costs to be covered. And if that wasn't done, why?
I can speak to the second one if Josh does.
Yes, we do have Jim Harmon and Barb Benda here. And maybe they would like to answer the first question. Being in other projects and being part of fundraising, I imagine the answer is to raise more money, which is what they're doing. But, but yeah, I don't know if you want to come and answer just how, how you would account for plans for funding cost overruns.
Hi, Jim Harmon, Board Chair of the Sports Commission. The question is good because as the project proceeds through fundraising, the time value of money changes based on when the, the project starts. So twenty twenty two dollars, different than twenty twenty three dollars. We had weather delays as well. So there's contingency that's built into all budgets for our projects. This is, while not officially a county park, it's for county residents three hundred days a year. So it's important that we're connected to really all of the existing assets for the county regarding public use. This brings into play the pickleball facility that we're building. Really, it's growing as we speak because Rockford Pickleball is now assembled and is bringing forward their members to utilize and take care of this. So the contingency, the Experience Grand Rapids piece, Josh can speak to. But it's been planned for, and it's really the time value of money, weather, increase in costs for products and for services. And, and right now we're just short in our campaign, sitting at a campaign of thirteen point five million roughly, being at thirteen point one. So we're a little over four hundred thousand dollars short through these, through these costs.
Uh, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna add, we, it has spoken with EGR, Experience Grand Rapids, about the additional funding needing. They had made a significant gift to support the project. So have asked us to look elsewhere to, to continue to fund that need that we have.
And, and I'll just add to that, that back when the contract was amended with Experience Grand Rapids and the hotel motel tax allocation to Experience Grand Rapids was increased, was specifically to cover operations so that the county could back off its general fund contribution, which it had made for five years from the inception of the Sports Commission until the operations money was funded through Experience Grand Rapids.
Thank you. Just one follow up. So, I mean, it just seems like this is, so we are decreasing the amount that we're giving them for operations, but we're still translating this into the campaign. It just seems like a swap. It doesn't seem like we're actually, you know, gaining a lot here. So I guess, I guess, you know, is this something that we would do for other agencies that are quasi part of the county? I, I just, I'm, I'm trying to make it make sense for the way that these funds were allocated because there were lots of other ARPA projects out there as well. So I want to just make sure I understand why the West Michigan Sports Commission and not other areas. So I want to just make sure I understand why the West Michigan Sports Commission and not other areas.
I think that, well, I know that, the reason I made the recommendation was because, uh, we view the Sports Commission as a child of Kent County. Kent County was one of the three or four partners that actually created the Sports Commission. And there have been many points in the Sports Commission history where we have intervened with investments. Uh, to help the Sports Commission to the next step. Uh, whether it was the early five-year funding through the General Fund. And then the provision of the ongoing operating, uh, ca, revenue from the Experience Grand Rapids. Whether it was selling the land for what we bought it at decades earlier. At a substantial savings to the Sports Commission to, uh, increase the land that it had to build facilities on. The other allocation of four hundred thousand dollars that came later. So there have been points in history where. I, I would say the sports, a part of the thinking behind creation of the Sports Commission. Uh, well, obviously to create kind of a, an amazing place for teams to come from all over the country and compete. But it was also to boost, uh, beds and heads. And was, uh, and the reason for asking Experience Grand Rapids to help cover the operations. Uh, was because that it, it helped increase the hotel motel tax as well, which is, in the case today. Uh, certainly increasing the hotel motel tax with the completion of the fields. And the additional two hundred teams a year estimated that will come. Uh, will all be money that, that's then available to help pay the bonds to pay for the new facilities and so. Uh, that's, it's really kind of the system that we've, uh, entered into with the creation of the CAA and. DeVos Place and the, uh, now the, and the arena and, uh, soccer stadium now and the amphitheater. It's, it's part of that group that all exists to promote, uh, visitorship to Kent County. And thus help to pay for the assets that are necessary to provide those, uh, assets for the community and, and for visitors.
Are you good, Commissioner McLeod? Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. So just hearing the word ARPA put me into a PTSD, so I have to get over that. How much do we have in the special needs? We're talking about the special needs fund. What's the, what's the total?
No, it's the special projects.
There's special projects.
So ba, basically at one time when the ARPA money was initially allocated, the board held back eight point three million. For those other reasons of a project we hadn't thought of, or a project that needed help, or, uh.
But that was transferred into the.
And that, that's been gone a long time because we, I think, had at least three, maybe four board resolutions to protect the money as we got rumors of clawbacks and. And all that sort of thing, so basically the money for, uh, for projects and. Four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars was put into the special projects fund. While the origin of the four seventeen is, if you go back far enough. Projects that administration had funded by ARPA such as the Guide House contract to oversee, uh, our help with the ARPA consulting management. That was two hundred thousand. So that money is in a special project account by itself. But for, in our mind, it's way far away, way distant from being ARPA, because that's been.
Well, in fact, none of the, none of the considerations, the restrictions, the applications of process that are associated with ARPA, that, that's all gone.
That's all gone, so from my mind, it's, uh, it's an allocation from the special projects fund for the reasons that I gave.
And I assume every such request, uh, stands on its own merits. This is a, this is a project that we've already been pretty deeply invested in at the county.
Over a long period of time.
Commissioner Sparks.
Chair, uh, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Um, not sure, you said a significant gift. Am I speaking here? A signi, do we know it have an amount as to what that significant gift was? Is that?
Oh, you mean the money that went from the CAA, I'm sorry, not CAA, Experience Grand Rapids to the project? I do not. The, it would be the contribution that Experience Grand Rapids gave for the Meyer Sports Complex.
It sounds like, uh, we don't know if that can be made public at this time, um, so.
It's not three hundred and fifty thousand, I'm assuming.
I don't know.
Okay. So if we don't know that amount, then we're, we're asking for the three hundred and fifty thousand, but we could need less? Or are we still, um, there's a shortfall? It looked like there was a shortfall. And when we. Do the groundbreaking and, and you finish building everything up, are you doing that shortly? Or is there going to take a little more time because we all know the cost of lumber is going up and everything else is going up, so. Is all of that going to be in the same timing or will you need more money because you're not doing it right now? Does that make sense?
Great question, absolutely. So it's all under construction now. The year of twenty twenty-five is for construction and all play for baseball, softball, pickleball. And, uh, there's playground structures, uh, is in play for opening April of twenty-six. So it's all, it's all been activated by a construction manager. With procurement started on all of the products that need to be purchased.
So your bids are set. They're not going to adjust or change.
They typically don't change at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you have any additional questions, Commissioner Sparks?
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions or comments on this item? Okay, seen none. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Um, that takes us to item F. The Financial Status Report, Quarterly Report from Fiscal Services.
Be happy to know Ken checked in, so, and he, then he left again, so anyway, he was stuck in traffic, he said. Anyway. So I'm happy to present, good morning again, the, uh, quarter ended March thirty-one Financial Status Report for the General Fund. And also we include the Lodging Excise Tax Fund at the end because that's been so significant in our discussions lately. So overall, through the second quarter, revenues have increased from sixty-one point two million to sixty-seven point four million or ten percent, uh, higher. And expenses went from ninety-three point three to a hundred and four point one six or eleven point five percent higher over last year. Uh, we continue to, to, uh, maintain that the General Fund will have an excess of revenues over expenditures at our fiscal year end. Which is something we watch very carefully. Moving on to page two, some of the variances we can talk about real quick. Taxes are up thirty-two percent to twenty-five point four million. That's really timing of collections and that's variable year to year. Sometimes people pay ahead, it kind of depends on their tax status, things like that, so it's kind of variable, but we expect that to level off over time. Charges for services are up nine point seven percent to twelve point six million. It's primarily due to, uh, increased real estate transfer tax and, uh, uh, recording fees, some more, uh, real estate transactions taking place, which is a good sign. Intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenues are up eleven point four percent to twelve point three million. It's primarily due to increased, uh, state revenue sharing. That was in the state's budget, so that's a good sign. Uh, interest earnings are way down forty-eight percent and we had a very large, uh, mark-to-market adjustment at our fiscal year end, which is reversed out. Uh, in the next fiscal year, so that's not atypical when you have a large mark-to-market at fiscal year end, so. Personal is in line with our, uh, budget, seven point eight percent up to sixty-one point two, no alarms there. Supplies, um, decreased to, uh, ju, just over one point six million or roughly seven percent. And that's just timing, uh, timing of supply purchases as well and expected to be within budget by year end. Capital's up thirty point four. And that's due mainly to timing of vehicle and equipment acquisitions in the share of budget, so, uh, nothing unusual there. And we had some, uh, early transfers to the Child Care Fund, which increases that, uh, early in the year, but that will level off throughout the rest of the year as well. So nothing out of the ordinary there. Uh, we do expect to meet our forty percent minimum fund balance at fiscal year end. Moving on to page four, which is the departmental view of this report. Revenue stayed, are the same as the first page. Um, some of the notes in the, uh. The variances there, you can see IT is up thirty-seven percent, five point seven million, but they had some significant, uh, software maintenance agreements early in the fiscal year. So we still anticipate them to be within their budget. You can see social services is down, uh, twenty-four percent to one point five six million. And that's due to timing, again, prevention programming services, which, but it has a half million dollar, uh, encumbrance already, so that should, uh, jump back up to its expected levels here in the next quarter. Clerk registers, the deeds is up, that's primarily due to the presidential election last fall. And also some software maintenance items, but again, we expect them to be within budget. Um, human resources is up eighteen percent as well, to one point three million, and that was also some additional software purchases early in the fiscal year. Um, lastly, the Drain Commission is up and that's, uh, a result, as you saw that earlier today, they have a lot of projects going on, so they're. Uh, continue to, uh, invest in most of those projects throughout the budget year, so. Moving on to page five, you can see our cash on hand, or I'm sorry, fund balance, hundred and thirteen point eight million, uh, up from a hundred and eight million last year. So very good, uh, fund balance position of which we assign thirty-seven, or thirty-eight point seven million to economic stabilization, so. Nothing of alarm there. Moving on to page six, you can see our cash on hand, we also track that. We have, uh, fifty-nine days of cash on hand, fifty-seven point one million dollars, so very good status of our cash on hand. Moving on to page seven, which is our, uh, our fund balance tracking page, which I really like. You can see why we maintain such a significant fund balance. You can see during the low part of the year, June and July, before our taxes come in, that we. Reach into our available fund balance to fund operations. And then by the end of the fiscal year, it pops back up, so we, we track that to make sure we have available resources to pay all of our bills. Lastly, Lodging Excise Tax on page eight. You can see the five percent transient tax up to, uh, up four point nine percent over last year, so a good trend there. Um, we're beginning to track the three percent, which kicked in January first. So you can see no comparison to last year's, it wasn't in place, just under a million dollars. At the stage of this report, we have not made the five million commitment to, uh, the amphitheater. I believe that's going out this quarter. And then we have made our big debt service payment in the fall, so. Year to date, you'll see better performance than last year, but that's primarily due to the five million dollar payment. Um, but we expect that, uh, to track throughout the rest of the year without any issues, so. We did pay back two million of the General Fund advance to the Lodging Excess Excise Tax Fund last year, and that is down to eight million. And with that, I'm happy to be answering questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Green.
Thanks, Jeff. Excuse me, if you could just maybe provide a little bit more detail on the clerk, um, Q two to Q two. I know you mentioned up twenty-three percent because of the, um, election stuff. I recognize they had a lot going on. Um, but I was just curious, um. How that carried over into, um, this fiscal past last year? Was that still into? We're looking at, uh, quarter ended March thirty-one.
March thirty-one, so the first quarter obviously started in October, so they had that fall election.
The last.
Correct, yeah, so there was a hundred and eighteen thousand election per, uh, increases. And then software maintenance on the election equipment, so. Overall, the dollar amount, that's not, that's not that significant, but the percentage is high, so I'd like to mention that, so.
Thanks, Jeff.
Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. Jeff, I'm looking at the graph of the, um, fund balance over the course of the year, which. It's a great graph to, to visualize our rationale for a fund balance. What happened in twenty-three, twenty-four that it dropped so low? And is that, is that such an anomaly that we should wipe it off of the schedule or?
So that was our first, um, year of our new fiscal year. And we made capital transfers like we had in all the other previous fiscal years, and that caused that dip. So after that, we postponed those capital transfers. Till we see more collections in our property tax. We don't see that, that low dip, so that was a one-time occurrence. Shouldn't happen again. It was just timing of capital is what that was.
Because I see in twenty-four, twenty-five, we're back up to.
We caught it that second year, so.
Okay, because that looks dangerously low to me.
Yeah, it did. To me too, so. That's why we researched it, so what happened here?
Thank you.
Any other questions, uh, for Jeff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us on to, um, miscellaneous. Is there any Commissioner miscellaneous this morning? All right, seen none. We are adjourned.